We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on May 4th, 2021 to order at 2:00 PM. Joining me online today for the last time hopefully, our Mayor Pro Tem Hector Sabido, Councilmember Andrea Bearfield, Councilmember Josh Borderood, Councilmember Kelly Palmer, and Councilmember Jim Holmes. City staff also online today are Bradley Ford, City Manager Jennifer Ritchie, our City Attorney, and Esmeralda Hudson, our City Secretary. Now pause with me for a moment of silence. Thank you. On March 16th, 2020, the Governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his state of disaster authority. The change was effective March 16th, 2020 until further notice or until the state of disaster declaration expires. In accordance with physical distancing guidelines and while providing as much transparency as possible, this meeting will not be open to the public attending in person. This meeting is being broadcast live at WCCC.TV. The audio is also being recorded. The video and audio recordings will be available to the public. According to the Governor and Attorney General statutes that may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended. Provided however, that the governmental body offers alternative methods of communication with their public officials. This includes public comment on agenda items. In an effort to allow for as much public input as possible, those who wish to speak or submit their written comments on a listed agenda item were asked to register with the City Secretary's office by noon today. Individuals who register to speak on an agenda item must limit their comments to three minutes. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speakers wish to address. We will now recess the regular session and convene the work session with a report from our City Manager Bradley Ford. Bradley?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. We do have one change on the agenda this evening and it relates to Resolution 2021-264, which is the Chapter 380 Policy for Neighborhood Grants. I'm going to cover that here in a few moments in greater detail. I do not have any employee recognition items, so I'll move quickly into our one informal report, which is an update on COVID-19. I'd actually like to ask Deputy City Manager Deidre Emerson to step in for a moment and cover a few items on that report.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and City and Council. A couple of things we just want to make sure that we give you an update on in regards to our COVID-19 and our issue and vaccine and how we, effective tomorrow, we will begin allowing walk-in appointments. And so individuals who want to walk in and walk-ins are welcome. And so if you have the desire to receive vaccine at the City of Waco Convention Center tomorrow at 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, you individuals are able to walk in and receive their first dose of Moderna vaccine. The schedule for the rest of the week will include Thursday will be an evening clinic or afternoon to evening clinic that opens begins at 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And then Friday and Friday's clinic will be 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Saturday's clinic will be 10:00 AM to noon and that the Saturday clinic, we will be issuing Johnson and Johnson vaccine. Beginning this week, we will, we will continue to have every Thursday will be, the clinic will be from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM going forward. So we are having evening clinics to allow those individuals who aren't able to come in the daytime to come later, later, later on in the day. Additionally, there are two community clinics that are scheduled. One on May the 15th at Estella Maxi in coordination with the Housing Authority. And then on June 19th in coordination with NAACP and the rest of the Juneteenth events, there will be, we are coordinating and developing a community vaccine clinic for that day. The communication plan will include direct mailers to a defined service area near those clinic sites. There are several workplace clinics that are scheduled as well to include M&amp;M Mars, SpaceX, and Halmet Aerospace. So we are, vaccine clinics are out on the road and we are going to the people where they are and ensuring, whether it be through radio ads, social media, direct mailers, that we will be making sure the individuals within those service areas are aware and can access that. And so again, I think it's really important for us to emphasize that walk-ins are welcome and we have vaccine and are ready to issue.
W City Manager, thank you so much for offering this update. This is really exciting to know that there is so much momentum from so many different fronts to get vaccines into the community. I love knowing that we are partnering with NAACP for Juneteenth and then Estella Maxi and workforce sites. This just feels like really positive momentum in really resourceful ways. So I tip my metaphorical hat to you and to LaShonda at the Health District and to everybody that's been working around the clock to make this happen.
I also want to echo Councilmember Palmer's sentiments. You know, one of the biggest messages that I know that this council has been very big on is with the vaccine distribution is equity. And I have to say that I love that staff and our Health District has taken this initiative upon them, carried it on their shoulders and really moved forward with it. You know, equity not only is a matter of race and ethnicity, but also in timing. So people that are working can also get to the vaccine in the evening, being flexible with weekends, you know, being flexible at locations. And so I just really want to commend our city staff and our Health District staff. We're just really taking what was important to council and I know that's also important to our city staff and moving forward with that. So I just really want to say thank you publicly for all of your work. I know we still have a road ahead of us, but I can honestly feel like we can see some type of light at the end of the tunnel and thank you, thank you, thank you for all the work that you've done.
I'll just say really quickly, ditto. We know everyone's been working, our staff has been working so hard on this. So ditto to the proactive and strategic work. I know this whole council values and appreciates that very, very much. Thanks Bradley.
Thank you. We, public hearing wise, Mayor and Council, we have one public hearing on the agenda today. It's associated with our standards of care for City of Waco youth programs that are conducted at Cameron Park Zoo, Texas Ranger Hall of Fame, and Parks and Recreation Facilities and other outreach locations around the city. As a reminder, these standards are a requirement under Texas law and we review these and adopt them annually in front of the City Council. Jonathan Cook is available for questions and will present this item later on in the public hearing as well. Resolutions, there's 11 on the agenda. I'm going to start with Resolution 2021-264. That's the Chapter 380 Policy that I mentioned a moment ago, the Neighborhood Grant Program. This item comes to the council after a couple of work sessions we posted in 2021. The grant, obviously it's going to open up to eligible neighborhood associations as early as tomorrow morning with applications due by May 28th. Our staff, after the last work session, has made a few adjustments, including the hourly rate of volunteer time counted towards match. We've modified that and an increase as well as the percent of match allowed to be counted towards volunteer time has gone up from 5% to 20%. A couple of the things I wanted to note related to this item, I am recommending a change to what's in your packet. And I believe Deputy City Manager Emerson sent that to you via email in the last hour or so. That change is in Exhibit A of the guidelines would permit newly formed neighborhood associations, those that form between now and October, to be eligible for participation in this program. That change was obviously provided to you prior to that change suggesting neighborhoods would have had to wait 365 days to participate in this program, which would effectively have cut them out of the next cycle of funding as well. And so we are suggesting that change to you today on your agenda. The second thing I wanted to highlight on this item, it's not a change to the guidelines, but more of a procedural note. We will be accepting partial applications in this first cycle from neighborhood associations that, that lack an administrative document like, like a W-9, let's say. And really, given this is our first grant cycle for this program, this procedure provides some administrative relief frankly to neighborhood associations that are run by volunteers and mainly need a little more time to find an administrative document like that. Finally, I will note though, that all application materials that are mentioned in the guidelines will need to be submitted prior to our issuance of awards, which we anticipate in late June. So effectively they'll get a little more time to get some of those administrative documents together that allows them to participate in the program. So take any questions on that at this time that you might have?
No, no questions on my end, but I would like to say I fully support the changes that are presented before. Before us by City Manager Ford and Deputy City Manager Emerson, I think of being flexible and allowing the neighborhood associations to really grasp the depth of this program in year one. I think it's going to be tremendous. I'm already hearing a lot of positive chatter amongst the neighborhood associations, how excited that they are that this program is being kicked off by the City of Waco. And so thank you for bringing those changes and for me having my full support.
Absolutely. Echo Mayor Pro Tem. I think this, we just removed a lot of barriers to access that I think could have been really intimidating to some of our neighborhood associations. So I appreciate Mallette and Rolando for being flexible and being malleable with community input. I hope that we'll see some new neighborhood associations come online between now and October, knowing that there is $7,500 up for taking. So shout out to North Waco and Heart of Texas in District 4. Now is the time to gather your neighbors and get some good funds to beautify your neighborhood.
This is Holmes and I'll just sort of echo what Hector and Kelly said. And I appreciate, this is something that the council's been talking about for a few years and just empowering these neighborhood associations is so important. So I appreciate staff's focus on this and their intentionality about getting this, getting this traction. And this is real money that's going out for, for these neighborhood associations. So I appreciate that. And also maybe, and I don't want the neighborhood associations to feel intimidated by the paperwork part of it. And I think that we'll be, we'll be flexible and we'll try to, we'll try to help them out to get these grants. Because ideally what we're trying to do is get, get this, get this money flowing into the neighborhood associations. We're trying to get neighborhood associations more active. I know each of us council members reach out to our neighborhood associations in their heads on what's going on. So it's invaluable to the government of the whole city to have, have strong NAs. So I appreciate the effort here. Again, we've been talking about it for a few years and to see it come to life is, is very encouraging and appreciate staff's work on this.
The one thing I'd add is I agree wholeheartedly that we want to make it very easy for neighborhoods to apply for these grants. And I think that these were wise edits and I'm fully supportive of those. I think there's a balancing act here a little bit of, of wanting to make sure that we are working and assisting with neighborhood associations to, you know, beef up their, not only their memberships, but also, you know, strike that right balance of making it easy to apply, but also making sure that we're stewarding these taxpayer dollars well and making sure that neighborhood associations, you know, if they don't have the W-9 now, that, that we're getting them into a position where they can do that in the future. Because again, I don't want it to be over burdensome, but also I think empowering them to be able to be organizations that can receive and distribute grants is going to be something that we can help get them there on. And another thing I'd like to say too is let's, you know, what I would encourage our staff to do and, and for all of us to do really is see, you know, my hope is that this is, this is one way, I think this grant program is excellent just in itself and alone. But my hope is that it plants a seed that allows neighborhoods to completely flourish and, and kind of builds out neighborhoods. It's kind of a carrot that, that attracts people to participate, but then they're in for the long haul and for all of the things that neighborhood associations do. And so part of my hope is that we, you know, staff can monitor how we're utilizing this moment to really catapult even more activity on, in an ongoing basis with neighborhood associations. Because as Councilmember Holmes and other council members have said, these neighborhood associations have a lower to the ground on the needs in, in specific parts of the city and can really shape and have a voice in the direction of our city. So it's a powerful opportunity for us to kind of build this culture of interaction with constituents in a powerful way. And I'm hopeful that we'll be strategic about utilizing these grants to build up something that, that allows for that continued communication on where we're headed.
Quick point of clarification, for the new neighborhoods, are they eligible to apply for the May funding or just for the October funding and then going forward?
So they would be eligible if, and well, let me, I've got that guidelines open, but I want to call on Deidre to provide that answer because she's more in the details here. Deidre, you have a response to that?
So the, based on the proposed guidelines, which would allow them to not have to be in place for 365 days. If they have the, meet the, the paperwork criteria, then they would be able to apply in the current grant process. If they don't have that, then, but they have the ability to get it before we actually award funding. So there's, so the short answer is yes. But there's, but there's caveats to that. I mean, they, they will have to have the, meet the qualifications in order to, for us actually disperse dollars to them.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well said, Deidre. All right, two more resolutions I wanted to highlight and they're related. They're the two resolutions that deal with street improvements today. It's Resolution 2021-265 and 267. These resolutions will provide pavement treatments to streets that rank pretty low on our pavement condition index, our PCI, including a street reclamation on more than two miles of streets of Faulkner Lane and Garrison Street, as well as street preservation techniques, techniques on four miles of streets, including portions of Gurley Lane, Schroder, Industrial, and Wycon. These two resolutions represent, you know, another $3 million invested in our Better Streets Waco program. That program has seen dramatically higher funding over the last few years, thanks to this council and their strategic priority of investing in infrastructure. That investment since June of 2019 has led to a three-point increase in the PCI from 45 to 48. We've got a long way to go, but it's heading in the right direction. Wanted to call out for residents seeking more information about the Better Streets Waco program. They can go to www.bettersstreetswaco.com and click on that main project map that's on the website. They can gain access to an interactive map that shows the projects that were funded in prior years, the projects that are currently ongoing, as well as projects planned in the current year with current funding.
Bradley, this is Holmes. I'll just comment on that. After being fresh off the campaign trail, I can assure you that streets and pavement is still a very high priority out there in the city of Waco. And I think it speaks to, invalidates really our decision several years ago to increase the commitment, the taxpayer, the funding commitment by tenfold to just get caught up on, on streets and roads. So I think it's, we set up work to do, trying to get that 48 up to, I think 75 is where we're trying to get, at least 75. So it's going to take some more commitment, but it's, it's, it's not money poorly spent and it's appreciated. And I think it's moving everybody in the right direction. So thanks to staff for getting this on track.
Thank you Bradley for keeping us updated on our Complete Streets program. It is certainly an initiative that is long overdue. I do want to ensure that as we are preparing to better our neighborhoods and areas that we're letting the people who are directly affected know in enough time that they will have the ability to shift any of their, you know, regular traffic programs or scheduled times to leave. Because it, no one, everyone except me, you know, prepares to leave for things on time and plans that, you know, to add in traffic to their schedules when they're due to leave and don't run out of the driveway and like, this is a problem. But I think that if, if we notify them in enough time, then we can do better about planning. And it's not a surprise, you wake up and your road is torn up. You know, because while we're, you know, excited and grateful about the, the renovation and the betterment, right? Renewal of much needed infrastructure, a little, you know, communication is always helpful. So I'm glad that you highlighted the website. I think that's something, you know, as we put on our, our website, our city channel to keep people informed. Because I mean, while complete streets are, you know, the hottest thing smoking in our mind, they may not be top of mind to everyone. So the, the greater plan is always good to put, bring, bring forward and remind people, you know, what we, what our plans are, what we're doing. So I appreciate you for mentioning that. I encourage, you know, I'm an over communicate, over communicate. And if we can make sure that, that the people who are affected in whichever phase that we're in, so specifically those on Faulkner and Gurley, because that is a heavily trafficked, those are both heavy traffic streets, if you could be sure to let them know so that it's not a surprise when they get up whatever morning it starts and it's like, oh, you're pulling Andrea.
I think that's great. Councilwoman, the, the team is, you know, the website certainly is one avenue. I wanted to run by a couple others that, and see if you think this is enough, right? There might be other ideas. We're going to do a video of the project and obviously do some social media, but I'm also going to do some door hangers in that area, Faulkner and Garrison for sure. And then also message boards alerting folks ahead of time, you know, hey, there's about to be a traffic change in this area. Because that is a street reconstruction. As you said, it's a, it's not something that just takes place over one day. It's impactful for a good amount of time and I appreciate your feedback there on communications. It helps to sharpen our approach.
No, that's exactly what I mean. Because it's, it's one thing to, you know, people may not read a bill. I'm just saying, you know, to put it in the water bill. But if you put it on my door, what is this? I have to ask, so I'm going to look and I'm going to read. And so I think that's exactly what we need along with the boards and everything. So no, that's great. Thank you.
All right. On ordinances today, we have four on the agenda today. Each one of them is a second reading. And if there's no further questions, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Mayor and Council, for the second reading of Orders 2021-272, Mayor Meek, Board Leader Palmer filed affidavits of substantial interest, as well as filing for Orders 2021-274, Councilmembers Palmer and Borderood filed affidavits of substantial interest. That's all I have.
Thank you, Esmeralda. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, the consent agenda will include Resolutions 2021-261 through 2021-271. I'll now ask our City Manager to introduce the first work session.
Thanks Mayor. Our first work session is 2021-253, which is an update on Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund Initiatives. The City of Waco has partnered with CFE, as it's called, since 2019. And today we're joined by Prosper Waco's Chief of Staff Dexter Hall, who'll be providing an update and an overview of the creation of a financial empowerment blueprint. So we'll turn it over to Dexter.
Good morning, Mayor Meek and to the City Council. Thank you guys for the opportunity, you know, to be able to speak to you and share with you this work. And I'll attempt to share screen as well. And so hopefully that works without a hitch. But, but first of all, just really want to say thank you and Tina. This presentation is the council and staff's complete focus on equity within our community. Because I think ensuring the economic security of all Wacoans definitely hits to the heart of the equity conversation, which basically allows us to lift everyone so that they can make their own informed decisions and choices. So let me attempt to share a screen. If that works. And it does not go to my screen. And I apologize because it doesn't allow me to share it. Oh, Gail, thank you. There we go. Well, thank you very much. And so in looking at the City of Waco Economic Blueprint for Security, next slide. I'll start with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Many of us know Dr. King and the early days of the Civil Rights Movement and everything that he did from Birmingham to Atlanta and to various places within the country. But some of us forget, the last focus before Dr. King was assassinated in Memphis was really in and around his focus on economic security for individuals. And so he began to shift that message. And that's where this quote comes from, genuine equality means economic security. When we look at that, before you is a map from 1936. This is a map that basically indicated as to where investment was to be made in, in our city. The colors may not necessarily be coming through as it's commonly referred to as a redlining map. If you look at the brazes and you see the areas to the right of the brazes, you'll notice that the majority of those areas are in pink or red. If you look to the left of the brazes in our Lake Shore area, our lake area, you'll notice that the majority of those are blue. And even as you look in the South Waco area, there are pieces, if you will, in and around Baylor that are shaded in blue and then other pieces that are shaded in pink as well. And so this is a map that of course was utilized to determine where investment should be made within a community. And so when you look at that, it was a combination between financial institutions, policymakers. So more than one group of folks within that city. And so you look at now, 85 years later, 85 years later, you look at, we're still having systemic issues in the communities in which no investment was to be made. So when we look at some, in our East Waco community and some parts of our South Waco community, you begin to see how intentional this work was and that it did have those results. What do those results look like today, even 85 years later? 5% of all US households are approximately 12 million adults are unbanked, meaning with no checking or savings accounts. 11% of US households, approximately 24 million adults are underbanked, meaning that they don't have the complete access to the full array of products and services that an institution would have, a banking institution. Nearly 34% of unbanked and 45% of unbanked households earn less than 30,000 per year. And naturally nationally, 48% of black households and 42% of Hispanic households are unbanked or underbanked, compared to less than 14% of white households. You begin to find that in looking at these particular national stats, that these are also true, if you will, when we begin to look at our localized communities in direct reflection to this particular redlining map. What does it mean in terms of credit and the systemic issues that have focused on that from 1936 to now? Is that that's where you begin to see predatory lenders come into play to begin to fill a need that all Wacoans have, all individuals within our country have the ability and the need for credit at some point in times in their lives. The Texas Office of Consumer Credit reports that the annual percentage rate from installment loans for payday lenders, inclusive of those in our area in 2019 was 490%, 490%. Let that sink in for a moment. And title loans, which are actually secured loans, secured by some type of property, vehicle. In that instance, the interest rate, the average loan rates was 418%, so only slightly less than unsecured lending. 18% of all Texans had their cars repossessed who fell into these categories. And get this, they paid a whopping $1.64 billion in fees as it relates to predatory lending. And so these are the systemic impacts that have occurred. And with this knowledge and the knowledge of lots of individuals throughout our community, we went forth to be able to create, if you will, the economic blueprint for security and way. So Bradley mentioned in terms of Cities for Financial Empowerment. In 2019, the City of Waco was selected to participate in the second cohort of cities to receive a City Start, a City Start Grant for City Start Financial Empowerment Fund. What this indicated was is the City Start Initiative offers, if you will, a structured approach for cities and stakeholders to understand what's the current state of financial security efforts in a particular city and in this instance in Waco. As a part of this particular process, it was a convening of stakeholders from throughout the community to provide productive ways, develop strategies and craft the blueprint of successful programs. and craft a blueprint of successful programs and policies encompassing financial empowerment. And lastly, to lever anchor institutions, organizations that were already doing work of this particular kind in our community at that time to make sure that we're not reinventing or recreating the will, but we're coming alongside to be able to help support those organizations or fill in gaps where nothing was being done. And so you'll see listed in our presentation that anchor institutions of the, of Waco, including uh the city of Waco, Prosper Waco, United Way, Baylor University. The first financial empowerment bootcamp of all of our stakeholders occurred in October twenty nineteen. And that's where CFE staff came forward and came forward to really, you know, create this group of cohorts. Listed there are just some of the city stakeholders who were present at the bootcamp, members from our African American chamber as well as our Hispanic chamber. So John Bible, Patricia Chisum Miller from McLennan County, Chris Collins from the Greater Waco Chamber, Deidre Emerson, Deputy City Manager, John Pesavant from Startup Waco, Susie Painter Marge from Prosper Waco. And those are just among the few. And also Councilmember Hector Sabida from the City of Council was a part of that. Jeff Schultz, Alfred Solana, Nicole Winter and Libby Kane from Extracobank. And so as you can see, a large gathering of stakeholders came together to help put and influence, if you will, this overall report and what that looked like. Next slide. Oh, got it. And so when we look at that, there were four areas that CFE focuses on. CFE focuses on asset building, banking access, consumer financial protection and financial education and counseling. So those four are group of stakeholders adopted, but they also asked for two additional ones to be added to the list. And that is small business development and financing. And we all know why that's important and how important that is to our community. And of course, workforce development and support. Next slide, please. When we began to look at, when we look at the financial empowerment, financial education and counseling, of course, consists of supporting financial security with professional financial counseling and coaching and other integrated with social services. One of the programs in which we support is our Financial Navigators Program. This particular program, we recognize in our community, even as the last conversation that went forth about how do we work with and inform a community, even something that's streets. We also recognize that when it comes to all of the resources that are available and especially through the pandemic, lots of resources have come available. And how do we make sure that members are of our community, understand what they are and we navigate them to it? And so hence, that's the role of the Financial Navigator Program. To date, there's a hundred and six sessions that have taken place. One of the things that we're working with and retooling that is we've taken on and hired, if you will, additional individuals from our African American community as well as individuals from our Hispanic community who are able to do more defined outreach to those particular communities themselves to ensure that they're aware of the program and that they're aware of the resources that the program has the ability to navigate them to. So really excited about how we will look at that on a go forward basis. The next item, of course, we're talking about is small business development and financing. And a lot of the work that we uh are doing from this was really directly influenced, I'd like to say, from individuals who are represent the minority small business owners within our community. One of the things that they told us uh in various research that I did in twenty nineteen for some other organizations, as well as it researched that we got back when we did the Small Business Recovery Program, is we learned and noticed that there was a lot of technical assistance that was needed. So even as it relates to, does all of our small business have the right ownership? You know, are they doing tax returns? Do they have the ability to be able to provide a financial statement? Are they, do they have the right technology, you know, that's available to them? And so one of the things that they asked for and showed is, what are the actual programs that are needed? One of the things, of course, that we recognized was financials. All of them do not have ability to be able to go out and hire an accountant um or someone like that. But do we have the ability to be able to create a class and work with them on setting up their financials and then providing coaching to them directly in their business post-class itself, which gives them the maximum use, you know, of a coach as well as the understanding of the program? So the Small Business Technical Assistance Program that we're in partnership with the SynTech, with the SynTech African American Chamber as well as the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce as well. All small business owners, of course, and access to credit. And so even through this particular program, gives us an opportunity to be able to leverage all that is available to them in our community. Number one, of course, is, is the variance opportunities that are occurring um through pandemic relief. So not only are we talking about the Paycheck Protection Program, one and two, talking about the IDLE program, the Economic and Injury Disaster Loan, but also the new programs that have come online, the Shuttered Venue Operators Grant. And then just Monday, just started was the Restaurant Revitalization Program. So many of our restaurants, food trucks, all of those now have access and those are grant programs to make sure that they're aware of that as well as continue to talk to them and refer them to organizations like McKiff or to Startup Waco as relates to Kiva. And then, of course, for those who may be in that realm, to be able to talk to them about other financing that occurs through our traditional bank channel, uh, bank channels. Consumer Business Financial Education, as we talked about, and looking at various classes to be able to help them to develop a marketing plan. But not only develop the marketing plan, but to provide coaching for them post-development. Because now you got it, how do you implement it, which really becomes key. In our Workforce Development Program, of course, you've heard lots about it, so I won't go too in depth about it. But our Workforce Development Program, as known as Upscale Waco, really excited that our first cohort is underway right now uh from that particular program. So thank you all for your support of that particular program and continued support. We're in the process, I should say, of continuing to plan, not only just individual courses, but concurrent courses as well. And then, of course, listening to our various stakeholders, including our business community, about what their particular needs are to make sure that we are nimble to be able to offer varying courses. For example, we've heard from many that hospitality courses are needed. And so we're working on hospitality courses that also will take place through the Upscale Waco Program. So grateful for that work. Next slide, please. In the asset building and saving for our future and being able to weather financial shocks and setbacks, we're working with affordable housing, looking at affordable housing initiatives. We know that currently the city is, has a study that is underway in terms of affordable housing. So anxiously awaiting for that release to come out to be able to assist and support in whatever way that we can. But beginning to look at some of the opportunities that exist and talking with many of our organizations recently, from Habitat to Neighbor Works, really working in grassroots, you know, listening and learning more about how, of course, in some instances lumber, the price of lumber has tripled three times as expensive as it was pre-pandemic as it is currently. Looking at where they were able to offer an affordable house at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And today they're offering it at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So you begin to see how the upscale in terms of cost increase of cost is translating to an overall affordability um issue. So continuing to work with them in terms of what policies that we need to be advocating for, where we need to be advocating for additional resources or down payment assistance, you know, programs. So looking throughout the area, throughout the state and city to be able to assist with that. Another initiative that we're working on too is our Clean Title Program in helping many of our residents um throughout the city of Waco who basically are living in family owned properties and have been living in those properties for some time. And then, of course, recognizing that they do not have ownership of those properties. Not having ownership to those particular properties definitely does not allow them to, if you look at the overall initiatives in and around the black white wealth gap. Well, obviously, if the title gets cleaned and we're able to put it into that individual's name, that increases, if you will, their overall wealth immediately. One of the things that we also look at is, is by not having clean title, is that is a barrier to being, to able to apply for many other programs that they might participate in. Programs such as the City's Lead Program. Because there's not a clean title on it, they're not able to participate in that particular program. And what we find is many individuals within our community are, basically would qualify for that program based upon the guidelines, except for the fact that they do not have clean title. These issues continue to be rampant throughout our community. And even on today and a couple, a week ago, these issues continue to pop up, not just in terms of knowing that it's an issue, but in terms of individuals who are saying, hey, can somebody help me with this? How does this work? So more and more folks are recognizing that there is help that is needed. Grateful for some of the work that Justin Rosalini from the Magnolia Foundation, as well as Mayor Dylan, you know, who was working on these particular issues. And to be able to not only navigate folks to, if you will, getting the clean title that is necessary, you know, for them in terms of wealth building, but also in terms of allowing them, navigating them to post-clean title, to affordable programs or programs that would assist them in getting their houses fixed up based upon what's available. Banking access in terms of the Bank On Initiative um that is still under play. One of the things that we found is that when you look at organizations within our particular community is that National Reports, the FDIC just did um a study on how America banks, household use of banking and financial services. And what we saw is in that particular study, forty nine percent of black Americans indicated that they do not have a bank account simply because they don't have the funds to initially fund it based upon current funding rates. We recognize that and through Bank On and their certified Bank On products, you know, to become a part of, where banks like Extracobank is a part of this initiative and has a certified Bank On product, is that you begin to see that instead of the hundred dollars or more that many institutions require, as a member of Bank On, they've created products where as little as ten dollars per month, uh, ten dollars in opening deposit allows them to be able to open an account. Why does this become important? Number one, of course, is because of the fees that are associated with it. Consumer Federation of America, in their two thousand and six report, indicated that consumers pay a premium to bank at check cashing outlets. What does that look like? From nineteen eighty seven at one point six two percent to two thousand and six, uh, the average rate that was paid at four point one eight nine percent of a thousand dollar check. So you're looking at cashing a thousand dollar checks and then someone paying forty one dollars out of that check. You multiply that times two, two paychecks a month, that's eighty two dollars per month. That necessarily could be added back into individuals' household accounts for whatever it is that their needs as it relates to their cool, their schools or kids or, or even just entertainment, you know, that could be put back into um our overall economy that is being paid to organizations where they don't have to pay. I like to say that I bank at the bank that my mom took me to. I didn't get out the car, but I just remembered. So in other words, I learned how to bank the way that she did. And so like many folks in our community, they bank the way that their parents bank. So there's not necessarily a thought as it relates to where am I going? This is what it is that I've learned. And so through our financial education initiatives, being able to show individuals how they can put back into their pocket, you know, eighty to a hundred bucks per month, depending upon the numbers of checks that they cash, um, every single month averaging twelve hundred bucks. What would you do with an extra twelve hundred bucks a month? Let us show you how to get that money back into your household. And that's by utilizing, if you will, Bank On certified products at the various institutions in our community that offer Bank On uh products. The last one, of course, is consumer financial protection. And again, as I stated from the very beginning, is that individuals throughout our community, whether it's you, whether it's me, we've all had a need for some type of credit. And so we should not assume that individuals from our marginalized communities or low to moderate income communities does not have an access to credit or need for credit. As a matter of fact, when you look at some of the credit rates, is that those who actually earn the least amount of money, the least amount of money typically do not access credit vis a vis a bank. So in that same FDIC study that I referenced from twenty nineteen, individuals learning, earning less than fifteen thousand, individuals who are, are black or African American interacted with the blank, a bank at twenty three point five percent versus their white counterparts at forty five percent. And so then a question is, if they're not utilizing a bank, then where are they going? And then the easy answer is through payday lenders. And of course, you heard the fees that are being charged about the payday lenders. So it's not about not telling them not to go, you know, to an institution, but basically being able to share with them what the alternatives are. And so being able to provide alternatives to uh payday lenders. And so we're looking at various institutions within our community and those outside of our community to be able to introduce into the ecosystem here within, within Waco to give all Wacoans an opportunity to be able to do that. Lastly, of course, financial security for all is the long term and impact and direction of this program is to see all programs and policies in this blueprint enacted uh within the city through empirical and data driven initiatives. So being able to work together as a community to be able to leverage, if you will, how we can impact these communities through various initiatives, um, through support of other organizations. And then, of course, to be able to field gaps. Lastly, a quote by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. is one that I always think about when we're doing economic security work. He said, "It may well be that we will have to repent in this generation, not merely for the vitriolic words of the bad people and the violent actions of the bad people, but for the appalling silence and indifference of the good people who sit around and say, wait on time." Economic equality is genuine equality, and I thank you for your support and your time. Thank you. I'm sorry. Lastly, um, stay tuned for a Financial Empowerment Blueprint convening of community stakeholders. That's going to take place on May twenty sixth, two thousand twenty one um at the Baylor Club as we work with our community of stakeholders and those who are willing to work with us as well as invest in this program to ensure economic equality for all Wacoans. Thank you.
Dexter, thank you so much for that incredible presentation. Any questions or comments for, for Dexter, Mr. Hall?
Dexter, I've got a question for you. But first, thank you so much for this fantastic presentation. I was taking screenshots while you were going. I've never seen that particular map before. And that was a really striking depiction of the way that racism is so endemic and pervasive and structural. And um, I, I appreciate just the framing of this, that we can't just, we don't need to just be good people. We need to change funding, we need to change policies, we need to change um patterns of behavior in order to see outcomes differ. So just phenomenal presentation. Um, housing is something that I'm really interested in. And I love that y'all are looking at the clean title issue. I'm curious, what role do you see the city really needing to take on um in order to meet some of the gaps that we see in housing in our community?
A really great question, Councilmember Palmer. And thank you so much for uh the comments as relates to the presentation, including the uh redlining map. Just one second or two seconds about that. I'm reminded, I, my entire career has been in financial services, except for nonprofit work now um and working in a variety of roles. Um, in Oakland, California, in one of the banks that I manage, I remember as you go into a new bank, you go through a building. And the way that Oakland is situated, there's hill area and flatlands. And I'm reminded of seeing an old picture, that was old, an old picture. And there was this red line, there was this red, like a red marker that was drawn through the hill area and the flatland area. And when you look into the data, I'm look, this is an old picture from the thirties and forties. And now I'm looking at a community in which I'm working and it played out exactly the way that that map read. Lots of investment, lots of empowerment in the hill area and the flatland areas are still struggling within that. So you see there was intentional work that is being done. And that's why if we want the outcomes to change, there's specific and intentional work that needs to be done in this area. In terms of affordable housing and the affordable housing initiatives that are occurring, number one, I'm grateful for the partnerships um of Renisha Hudno from the Community Service Area as well as Galen Price um and Deidre. We've worked, you know, completely hand in hand and step by step. We communicate often um about a lot of this work. So I'm really excited, number one, um, for the housing study um that the city is undertaking. And I, you know, I'm waited with bated breath, if you will, for the outcomes of that. One of the things that we're beginning to see in some of the understanding, recently we met, you know, with all of the Neighbor, Neighbor Works, Grassroots, Habitat for Humanity, to really understand, you know, tell me, tell us what you're doing, what some of the issues are. And what you're beginning to see is, is that because of the cost, um, and when you look at the cost of uh supplies or goods or lumber, that lumber is three times as much as it was pre-pandemic. And so, you know, immediately housing costs are going up. And so, of course, how do you, you know, overlay that or what is it that you do? Number one, of course, they're looking into down payment assistance program. Whereas a ten thousand grand or fifteen thousand grand work pre-pandemic, is there more that is needed in order to help, if you will, many of our minority buyers to be able to get into um housing? One of the things that you also begin to see, and this is Dexter language, what I call is unintentional gentrification um in our communities. As housing prices go up, what you begin to see is the person who can only afford at a certain level, they begin now to look in a different area. So it's not planned, if you will, it's just because their housing price, they can't afford where they might have wanted to buy it, they now looking in different neighborhoods. That's one that is example, as we begin to look within our own city, is that I gave an example in talking to one of the organizations that I saw in West Oakland, in Oakland, California. Whereas West Oakland was a historical black um uh community with many Victorian homes within that community. But as housing prices began to rise years ago. but as housing prices began to rise years ago in Oakland, California, what you begin to find is, is that many individuals, and particularly white individuals, who would not have looked into West Oakland, all of a sudden now you begin to see areas of West Oakland that was ninety percent black are now about twenty, twenty-five percent white and growing. And so it wasn't planned, there was not a new development where people just moved in. They just went to buy in a price range that they could afford. And so you look at things like that, and so obviously, I'm, hopefully that answered your question in terms of needs and what it is that we certainly need to be looking at. And then what are the programs that we can begin to afford and offset that, um, with?
Awesome. That's fantastic. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, for the presentation. I appreciate it. Um, uh, tell me this, so we have concluded this, the first year of the Financial Navigator Program, right? Um, what happens next? I mean, has, is there a way to, um, you know, because Prosper Waco clearly has, uh, lots of financial empowerment programs, you know, already in its coffers. How does this particular program enhance? Does it change of, I mean, I know, you know, in drop a COVID in the middle of a whole plan and it just, you know, totally makes a shift in, in the intended direction, but what happens now? And moreover, how can we as councils, council, um, assist in, in sharing this message and making sure that our constituents fully understand what resources are available to them and for them so that we can get more people involved in, in this program?
Absolutely. Great question, Councilmember Bearfield, and thank you for the question. Um, we're still in the first year of Financial Navigators. It was rolled out in late August as a soft rollout and really in earnest in September. So we're still somewhere around month seven, you know, within the program itself. Number one, I think in terms of what is needed is the outreach. Um, we need to outreach more to our Hispanic community. Uh, and so intentional hiring has been done to ensure, number one, that we have someone who speaks Spanish and number two, that we have someone who knows where the Hispanic community organizations are, the churches, the other organizations to be able to engage them so that we're able to see that. The same thing in our black community as well. And so to reach out to organizations that are already serving, and so not trying to reinvent or create the will, recreate the will, utilize what's out there, but to be in better contact with them. One of the things that did occur is, is that there are a lot of resources that came online, um, because of COVID. You know, more and more resources came online because of COVID. And so number one is, is that we're from a, we're mining those resources to make sure that we've uploaded them to our database and understand what they are. And then, of course, hoping our outreach efforts give us more volume in terms of calls for us to be able to navigate folks to the various resources that exist, um, throughout our community. And there's lots of programs. And in some cases, there are some overlap programs, but trying to figure out what's the best one, you know, for that community member. So a couple of examples of those is being able to navigate individuals who were independent contractors, that many did not know that they could have gotten unemployment through the pandemic insurance because they've never gotten it before because they don't pay into the system, but because of the way the CARES Act bills, they now can get it. And so being able to show them how and navigate them to that particular right resource. Another resource that-
So, oh, I'm sorry. So those are like if, when people call the Financial Navigators with those particular questions, that's when they get directed to those resources?
Yes.
Specifically. Okay.
Because one of the things that we're doing is doing a complete assessment, a needs assessment. So when folks call in, as I've told some of our navigators, is that people call in and want, you know, what's, you know, what's going on? Hey, I need cash. Ooh, though we all, you know, but let's talk about how did we get into that position? And so instead of just going with they need cash, let's do a needs assessment. What's going on? You know, talk a little bit more about what's going on, you know, what do we need to understand so that we can navigate them to one or all the resources that are available to them and get it right on, get it right the first time. You know, get it right the first time so that they can get in queue to be able to receive the assistance that's needed. One of the things that, uh, I discovered in some of, last week I had an opportunity to present, um, a lot of information about Waco to, um, throughout the state of Texas, to the FDIC and the OCC, the Office of Control of Currency, the regulator of banks, you know, talking about some of the work that we're doing, and also do some learning. And so, for example, with the earned income payments, the EIC payments or the stimulus payments, if you will, recognizing that our homeless population also has the ability to be able to receive those payments. The only thing that they need to do is file a tax return, even though there may not be any income, but you're able to check a box, you know, to be able to get that rebate. And so again, here you go, you know, this is the help that's needed to be able to educate our community, those who are working with our homeless community, and to make sure that it happens. How can we make sure that it happens? Because they also qualify for those. And, and I think that's that whole piece of the gaps that exist in terms of here's a lot of resources, and then being able to connect, you know, to the individuals that need these resources, you know, so that we bring that back into our community. And honestly, in a program like this, it's a win-win, you know, for all of us because I think our community members are able to get access to additional capital to be able to help them. Where do they spend it at? They spend it with our minorities, small business owners, many of them, because of the communities or throughout the city of Waco. So a lot of that even goes right back into our overall economy. And so when I began to look at many of these programs, you begin to see how even through equality, you know, looking at economic equality, that when all of this works together in concert, everybody wins. Everybody wins with that. Thank you.
Hey, Dexter, thank you so much for the presentation. It's great seeing you.
Yes, sir.
Virtually, but I wish we could have been in person, but it's great seeing you.
I'm ready.
You know, um, I'm glad you brought up, I, I, being a part of the early conversations when we were meeting, um, in the convention center, you need to talk about the program and the launch and what does success look like? And I know that has been over a year and a half, you know, definitely pre-COVID. As we move forward with, um, the, the Financial Navigators Program, in what does success look like? And, and how do, you know, I know we're in the current year right now, uh, of it, like you said, month seven or month eight, but once we're done with year one, what does success look like? And what will guarantee success in the next couple of years?
A great question, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Sabido. Number one, in terms of, um, our community members, and really when I'm speaking of community, I'm talking about our community organizations know where to share a resource. Here is a place for all resources. And so I, I take a step up from, um, those who need the service to those who are already working with people who need the service. And that this becomes a vital tool within our community to help people to the various resources that are available to them. And so as we get all of our housing organizations, our homeless organizations, um, our nonprofit organizations, our sororities, all these folks are doing some type of touch base. They all have different economic programs that they're working with. Um, have spoke to a lot of them, that they recognize that, hey, you, you're in need, here's a resource for you. They can help you navigate to a particular program instead of folks assuming that there is no resources. That, that's really what success, you know, to me looks like. Obviously the help of folks, so I don't want to leave that out. But ultimately, if we can get our organizations throughout our, our community, Waco, McLennan County, recognize, if you will, that there's the opportunity, um, to navigate folks to the varying resources that exist. Um, in terms of our go-forward, and not only the Financial Navigators Program, but the full implementation, um, of our blueprint, bringing all of the other initiatives online, um, as you begin to see the definitive impact that they have. In other words, we talk a lot about the statistics. So for example, the black-white wealth gap. And so we all want to do something about it. It's growing. You know, we began to look at that. I know the United Way did a presentation, I think it was on yesterday, even as it relates to that and that missing category in terms of, in terms of the black middle class or upper middle class that was missing, you know, that doesn't exist here. And so now, how do we begin to impact that? Well, guess what? Programs such as Clean Title begin to impact that. So, um, talked to, uh, just brought to our attention, you know, today, here's a house that's valued at a hundred thousand dollars. Here are people who, basically, it's not in anyone's name. It's still in their great-great-grandparents' name. So the ability for us to be able to, and I say navigate them through the process, to show them how to get it done, um, through that particular process itself. And so to get that in the name of a person, that just increased, if you will, their wealth by a hundred thousand dollars. And so now they also get an opportunity to participate in various programs that housing organizations have, that the city has, and then that potentially will increase their, increase the prop, the, uh, price of their value of their home even more. They now get to utilize their asset like many of us do, you know, to be able to do that. And so those are intentional ways to be able to get to, if you will, the lingering, um, statics that we talked about that are lingering since nineteen thirty-six. And so with intentionality, and so being able to support programs like that and come up with ways to be able to fully onboard, if you will, all of these various initiatives, as well as other initiatives throughout our city, which basically at the end of the day, all of those numbers that we talk about that we don't like, that's great, but we gotta do something about it and be very intentional about what it is that we do.
Thank you for that, and that's exactly what, you know, more or less what I was looking for, you know? Um, even as you speak about redlining and the way it has impacted cities and seventy, eighty-plus year later, years later, and redlining was very intentional. You know, seventy, eighty-plus years later, we have to be intentional on making sure that the work that we do is going to benefit everyone.
Yes.
And so I, I, I appreciate that answer because even, you know, we still believe strongly in this program. Um, you know, we had, even in our work with NLC, we have been very, we have seen it very successful in other cities. I want to see it here in Waco, um, you know, thank, very grateful for former Councilmember John Cannard, who played an instrumental role in bringing this program to Waco, uh, through NLC. And so, um, please know that we want, we want to see this program succeed and work and what we, whatever we can do to help, please let us know. Because I think if this, when this program takes off, not if, but when the program takes off, it definitely is going to benefit, um, our community as a whole. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Uh, this is Holmes. Um, Dexter, uh, thanks for the presentation. You, you're great in commercial banking and you're also great in the nonprofit ones also. I can attest to both. But, uh, yeah, it's very important for this council to, for financial empowerment. And really, this, uh, as we entered COVID and, and the PPP program that you were talking about, uh, as that came out and, you know, we were telling everybody, you know, sign up, this is, you know, federal money, uh, and we need it. Let's get everybody on board. It became painfully evident, uh, to me, and I, I mean, you know, it was, it was just eye-opening that unless you had a banking relationship, and unless you had some, uh, financial ease with, you know, traditional banking relationships and channels, that you were going to have a hard time getting the PPP loan. That's, that was heartbreaking, heartbreaking to me and, and, and this, the way it was. It's so important for this city, uh, and, and when the city staff came out last, last summer with the Small Business Emergency Relief Funds to sort of patch things, uh, to backstop PPP a little bit, I was so proud of what, what we did as a city. But also seeing these other, uh, the Kiva, the crowdfunding deal, the, the McLennan County Investment Fund, the CDFI, um, the Financial Navigator that we just talked about today, Bank On, Community Loan Center. All these are great tools, uh, and many of them are initiatives of COVID kind of times, but they've got a life and a very high utility beyond COVID. So I'm excited that, that these tools are available, you know, as Waco grows and new businesses come in, new job opportunities. Uh, it's a, it's a high value to this council, uh, that everybody in Waco has financial security. It should be accessible for all Wacoans. So, uh, you have my, uh, uh, unqualified support in your efforts here, Dexter. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Holmes, for that. Um, I'm reminded, you know, and, you know, thanks to, uh, Assistant City Manager, uh, Galen Price, uh, Director Renisha, you know, Renisha Hudno, uh, and, you know, Deputy City Manager, Deidre Emerson, as well as the, uh, Financial, uh, Committee as it relates to, you know, COVID release, which I know you led, Councilmember Holmes. The, the Small Business Recovery Program, I hope you know, in terms of, was a huge success. Not only in being able to provide, I looked at it in two ways. Not only are we able to provide directly, you know, to individuals, to your point, who are not able to, but we were able to gain valuable information through that program on what was needed. And that's why even in the development of our Small Business Technical Assistance Program and the works that we're doing, it's a direct response to what we saw, you know, that was needed and what people told us, um, that was needed to be able to assist them. So it's not what it is that we thought, you know, or anything like that. So really, really happy about that particular program. And as much happy as I am about being able to get money out the door, I think what's, was more important is the information that we receive that helps us a lifetime. One of the things that we looked at in that, uh, when, at the beginning of that business, you know, of that program is, is we took, you know, three small business owners, three small business owners randomly selected and recognized from an annual revenue that they had about six hundred thousand dollars. And because of their size, um, their business, they were not spending, if you will, that outside of our community. That six hundred thousand in revenue that they were getting was hiring people from our community. They were going to HEB, you know, local stores in our community, so they were not going. And so I always ask that question when we talk about small business, is that when you look at that, think of the multiplier of the numbers of small business owners that we have. Now, think of the opposite. What if they went away? And you begin to see that six hundred thousand dollars in revenue that directly impacts our overall economy within the city of Waco goes away. But the flip side of that, of course, is what if we help them and help them to do better and understand how to do their financials, how to do this? To your point earlier, access all of these various programs, you know, that's millions of dollars that would have come into our community that some could not access because of the issues you mentioned that did not come back into our community and overall impact our overall economy. And this is why I keep saying that when you look at being able to support programs like this, it works for all. You know, it works for all. It's not just one community of folks. You know, it actually works for our existing businesses who are doing really well, who benefit from our small business owners as well as our individual consumers within our community being able to do better and raise their overall economic standard, you know, to that. And so it helps all of our small businesses, no matter what size they are. So really applaud this council, including your work as it relates to, uh, living wages, you know, and your work that has been doing, you know, that you guys have been doing around that. So really applaud because this is something that definitely helps, um, to your point, all of our small business owners within our community.
Dexter, thank you so much. Uh, we're, we're running a little behind today. The one question I have for you, Dexter, is there's so much great content and information. Is that, is this readily available somewhere on a website? Or, uh, for people who want to learn more about how to participate in this? I, I see the meeting coming up here in May, but, um, is there, you know, this PowerPoint kind of clarified and kind of gelled a couple of, of things. Is there a, a, a place that's being held where people can access it online?
It is in different, uh, elements, Mayor Meek. Thank you very much. Um, through our Prosper Waco, uh, website, under, uh, Financial and Economic Security, what you will find is, is I have been writing, um, about various aspects of this particular program. Each month, our last month was on cycle. And the cycle that happens, and if we don't break the cycle in terms of this, what do we do? And that includes our information in and around credit and consumer loan centers. And so you're able to go back and be able to see, um, these articles on that, uh, on Prosper Waco website, as well as to be able to contact me directly, which that information is listed on Prosper Waco website. And we're more than happy to be able to share, um, this presentation with any and all, and especially those who want to jump in and work with us to be able to help raise the economic security of all Wacoans.
Well, this is very exciting work. I think, um, anytime that we're putting proactive and strategic collaborative efforts to, um, um, improve financial security in Waco, um, we're going to see great outcomes. And, um, so, so thankful for everything that you're doing and what Prosper Waco and the other partners on this are doing. And we're so excited about where we're headed.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Mr. Hall. Thank you, guys.
All right. Bradley, what's next?
Thanks, Mayor and Council. We're going to call the next work session out of order. We're going to have Clint Peters join us and give a discussion of short-term rentals. Um, I'll let him, uh, provide his introduction. Clint?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Uh, this is a, uh, this presentation does dovetail into what Dexter's presentation, because this is a, a policy discussion on, uh, short-term rentals that could directly impact, um, housing affordability. So the timing's good on this. Uh, so this, this presentation is a, uh, follow-up presentation to a, a work session that, uh, we had on, uh, March second, uh, council meeting, where we gave a overview of, uh, short-term rentals, uh, talked about kind of the, where we, where we stand with them, inventories and status. And then, uh, staff gave some options on some recommendations for some ordinance changes based on, um, and what we're seeing with SDRs. And, and, and council, uh, requested some, um, some data to back up, uh, potentially changing, uh, some of the ordinances that we're proposing. So, uh, we, we, we do have some slides that show that data, and then we'll go into, uh, some recommendations that we're proposing, uh, to deal with some of the concerns that we have with, uh, housing affordability and availability. Uh, so we did want to give you, uh, a, a picture of where we stand on, uh, housing trends that we're seeing in Waco. These two, uh, graphs are, uh, citywide, uh, housing data. The top one is dealing with a number of sales and then average price of housing. Uh, you can see the blue bars are a number of sales, and you can see those, uh, a gradual trend upwards, um, from, you know, two thousand eleven to twenty twenty. Um, but, and you can also see a, a more of a, a higher- Um, but, and you can also see a, a more of a, a higher trajectory on uh housing prices. In two thousand eleven, we're looking at an average price of about a hundred and thirty thousand uh for a single-family home. And then uh, in twenty twenty, we're up above two twenty-five uh for an average uh price for a home. Uh, and that's uh actually twelve percent more uh than this time last year. So there, there is uh definitely an increase in our average housing price throughout the community. Uh, and then on uh availability, that bottom chart, um, this, this is uh data from the last year uh that shows uh housing listings, which is that orange bar, uh, not, number of real estate listings. And you can see that's trending down uh versus uh housing sales, which is the blue bar. Uh, and that's been um, you know, pretty consistent, but you can see over the last couple of months, we're actually outpacing, the sales are actually outpacing the, the listings. So there, the, the inventory that's out there, uh, there, there's more sales that are happening than listings. So I, I, I mean, that's, this is a good indicator that, that housing availability is just not there right now in our current market. Uh, and then we wanted, you know, wanted to look at uh closer, you know, potentially, you know, how SDRs are impacting the affordability and availability. And we're still looking at that data, but uh, you know, this is the map that we showed the last presentation where um, the, the dots are where we have our licensed SDRs and those are in our core of our city, city, and, you know, concentrated in the core. And so we wanted to look at some of the data, housing trends and some of those zip codes where, you know, most of the majority of our SDRs are located. So um, the next slides show some housing trends uh for seven, six, seven oh four zip code, which is East Waco. Uh, seven oh six, which is uh South Waco. Uh, seven oh seven, which is North Waco. Uh, and then seven ten, which is the kind of the Lake Shore, West Waco area. Uh, and you can see here, these are the, the, the four zip codes on housing trends. Uh, it's very similar than what you're seeing uh at citywide, where your um, you know, availability is, is going down and, and your um pricing is going up. So those orange lines are your days on market. So you see a trend where down uh, in, in, and all four of these zip codes. I, I would point out the, the twenty twenty-one uh numbers um because that's just a, a quarter of a year, uh especially for oh four and oh seven. Um, the dataset on that's pretty small, so those numbers may look a little bit out of whack, but I think it's just because of the sample size, wanted it sample size. Uh, but, but again, you can see, you know, with the, the availability, days on market going down and, and the um average median price going up, um, you know, that, those are indicators of housing affordability and availability. And then you can see um on the bottom of, left, left-hand bottom of all of those charts, the active listings. And they're, they're down considerably in all four of these zip codes, these core zip codes, twenty percent in oh four. Uh, almost eighty percent in oh six, uh fifty-one percent in oh seven, and then sixty-seven percent in ten. So that's, that's the actual active listings compared to what uh was there uh last year.
Hey, hey Clint, just real quick on the active listings portion, is that a year timeframe or is that?
Six years timeframe, what? That's compared to the, the current active listings compared to last year's. So, but what's actually on the market, listed on the market?
So for example, in seven, six, seven oh six, we're down almost eighty percent in active listings this year versus last year, this time last year.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, and, and just, you know, for some raw data numbers, what that ends up being, like for seven oh four, currently there, there's only eight active listings. So there's only eight houses on the market. So that's just kind of shows you that, that availability. Um, it, it's just not there right now for housing. And, you know, and then here's a, another um dataset to just kind of uh again further to um shows uh the availability, months of inventory. This is a tool that is used to measure how fast all the existing homes on the market uh would last, assuming uh no more listings are added and the rate of uh which the home sells is consistent. Uh, it's constant figure based on the average of the last twelve months. So um, you can see all the zip codes, our core zip codes. The, the trend is downward. So uh, and they're all either um right at two months of inventory or less uh with the city average being right up, right under a month of inventory. So again, this is a indicator of that affordability concern that we have. And so, you know, based on these housing trends, um, you, you know, back in our March uh work session, we had recommended that uh, we, we would consider a proposed ordinance change that would remove uh SDR type twos uh from special permit categories. Uh, and we, we, we believe that the data that we showed you backs that up. But the SDR twos would be removed from special permit categories uh from all our residential um, single-family residential zoning districts. So that's RE, R one A, uh, R one B, which is our most prominent single-family zoning district, and R one C. And, and that's about seventy percent of um the SDR permits that the council sees. Uh, and, and, and all, these are the zoning districts where you have uh the majority of our neighborhoods on, are in. And uh, you have the most impact on that availability or affordability. Uh, we also are recommending that the SDR type threes, uh which are the, the, the SDRs that are multifamily uh being removed from our residential zoning district, which are R three A through R three E and O two, O three and C one. Uh, which is about a little over ten percent of special permit applications. Um, so those are our two ordinance proposals. Um, current SDRs that have already been approved as special permits and have current license can continue to operate. Uh, no, no changes would, would be uh to them. Uh, and then the zoning districts where SDR twos and threes are already permitted by right uh can continue to obtain licenses. And that would be for SDR twos would be the R two zoning districts. Uh, assuming they meet that five hundred foot buffer rule that we have in place. And then your multifamily residential and office districts. Um, and then for SDR type threes, it'd be your C two and C four, which are your uh mixed commercial districts. And again, the idea behind that is uh the, these zoning districts um have a, a, a lesser impact on the overall uh housing uh trends that we're, what we saw in those uh past slides. Uh, and then also the SDR type ones uh will, will continue to be permitted by right in R two. Uh, the SDR type ones is where the, it is owner occupied, owner lives in the home and they're able to either rent out a room or a guest home, you know, in the backyard. Uh, but those would be, continue to be permitted by right in R two, the office districts and commercial districts. And then uh permitted by special permit in our single family, which is the current ordinance. Uh, and the thinking, thinking behind there is uh with, you know, this does, SDR type one actually is an opportunity for a a homeowner to get some extra income to actually afford, you know, their home. So we felt like this was one that was important to live, leave in there. The opportunity for those to be left, left in there. Um, next steps, uh, we, we, we are planning to have a discussion uh with the Plan Commission on these proposed changes. A similar presentation to what we're providing to you all today. Uh, and then have Plan Commission action and City Council action uh the last week of May. Uh, and then a second reading for City Council, June first, with an effective date of the ordinance, uh, June fifteenth. Uh, well, staff will continue to evaluate uh the impact SDRs will, are having on these housing trends that we're seeing. Uh, we have already provided the data to the consultant, the Mullin and the Longender Associates that's working on that housing study. Uh, and they're gonna, we're, we're gonna follow up with them and have some meetings with them and discussions and, and hopefully get some potential recommendations uh directly uh dealing with SDRs in the housing study. Uh, and, and then out of that uh evaluation, there could be some additional uh SDR ordinance amendments uh dealing with the zoning ordinance on where that could be. And then potentially um some caps as part of our licensing ordinance. Um, that uh, we'll look more at, you know, what, what is the appropriate number in, in given areas? Whether it be zip codes or neighborhood associations or some sort of geographic area again to um, you know, help combat those affordability and availability, housing concerns that uh we're, we're seeing right now. And with that, I'll open it up uh for discussion.
Clint, before we get too far into that, will you share your screen again? I want to call out a date to the council. There's a special council meeting listed on that uh diagram and want to make sure we cover that. On the twenty-seventh, I believe.
Yes, on May twenty-seventh.
Thanks, Clint.
Yeah, and again, the purpose of that is there, we, we do feel like there's a little bit of urgency here uh because of the housing trends we're seeing to, to have an accelerated uh schedule for implementation of this ordinance to get it in place. So, you know, if, if SDRs are impacting uh these, you know, these key issues with housing, we, we want to limit that impact.
Clint, thank you so much. Uh, I wanted to ask, first of all, just as a preliminary matter on that special called meeting for calendaring purposes. Is that more like a morning meeting or is that more of an afternoon or evening meeting?
I'm sorry. Or I'd, I'd say um, you know, in the absence of anybody else talking, I'll talk. Uh, maybe perhaps we get Secretary Hudson to poll the council and find a time convenient for the, for the members.
Okay. Thanks so much. Yeah, uh Clint, I really appreciate you and your team uh and the city manager staff huddling about this. And I realize it matters to a lot of us and it takes up a lot of the council's work in terms of the formal business session. So thank you for your thoughtfulness and consideration. I, I truly appreciate you framing this uh in terms of our current trends with home prices and home inventory, uh which is something that I think a lot of our council are hearing, uh, not, not just anecdotally, but uh that really affecting our folks. So I really appreciate this. I, for one, uh, support this recommendation. Um, and the only question I have, and I don't think this is something that would, would bar me for, from voting for this, but I wanted to ask if I realize this would greatly reduce the number of these hearings that we would take up, but was there any consideration given to a, whether a short-term rental uh decision body such as the zoning board of adjustment or something like that, taking up the remaining uh special permit applications?
We, that's something that we still need to look into about that process. Um. We, we just, we had, we hadn't had time to really look into that, uh, to, to give you some follow, follow-up on that.
But, but in summary, uh, if, if you've, if you're kind of a legacy license uh, and you already have one, you continue to operate under that license. If you do not need a special permit for your license, meaning if, if your license doesn't require Plan Commission and City Council hearings, then you can continue to apply for and obtain uh a short-term rental license. But it's these uh SDRs two and three in the designated zoning areas uh that would be taken off the table essentially effective June.
That, that, that's correct. We, we felt like the, the, the zoning districts where you allow the SDR twos and threes are are the areas of the city that are being impacted the most by these housing trends. And we felt like those are the ones that take off the tables. I'm not saying that, you know, there, there might not mean to be some changes for the other ones. But uh, right now, we felt like that was the most important thing to look at. Uh, so you're a hundred percent correct with, with what you stated there.
And, and then final question, Clint, thank you so much. Uh, final question on that is when would essentially the application? Should this go according to the timeline that you're recommending? When would the cutoff application deadline be? Uh, when would the last of these we would be, have to take up uh before uh passage if, if it was passed?
So we, we would, we would continue to take applications to that effective date, that June fifteenth effective date. So uh potentially those would be cases, you know, if you got a application on June fourteenth, those cases would, would come to the council in August.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Um, I really appreciate this. I think that taking a data-driven approach to evaluating the housing stock in our community is critical. Um, I think anecdotally, we kind of felt, felt that there's a how to um these concern, uh, we, we felt these concerns, but to be able to actually put some data to it, I think is important. And I appreciate the further exploration that we'll be doing on this. Um, a couple of questions I had. Um, or one question I had, I guess, is, and, and I think this has been addressed already, Clint, but I, I just, I missed it. Could you just tell me specifically the impact on um uh, 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 or work through a little, a little bit more on the impact that this will have on um short-term rentals and commercial zonings? Clint, if you're talking, you're muted.
Yeah. I had a great answer.
It was great, Clint. It was great.
This, this ordinance change does not impact uh SDRs and commercial zoning. So it just, it just, it impacts the special uh permit categories for the SDR two, which is the ones in the residential zonings. And then the SDR threes, which is multifamily and office as zonings.
Okay. So um, uh, what is the impact to the multifamily and office zonings for this? It'll be a, a bar for now?
Right, just, yeah, just the, just the SDRs um twos and threes that are uh permitted by special use. So, so, so all the, for SDR twos where you are permitted by right, which is R two zoning with, with that five hundred foot buffer, uh, and then your R, R threes, which are multifamily, and then your Os. Uh, you're permitted by right. You can still come in and get a license. That won't change. Uh, and then the SDR threes where you're permitted by right, which is C two and C four. Uh, you continue to come in, the staff get your license and, and that doesn't change with that dis ordinance change.
Correct. Um, and I think just another thing I add to this is that um and I, I think that we are exploring it. I, in fact, I know that our city staff is exploring this. Um, but um as, as we um, you know, continue to look at comprehensive housing strategies, one thing that um, um, I know some of our short-term rental advocates have, are quick to point out is that um, there's a and, and, and frankly, what I see and wrestle with sometimes is the um restoration of historic homes that short-term rentals um have provided. So I think that um looking at comprehensive um strategies to stabilize our housing stock is going to be critical. And I know that short-term rentals um might play a role in this. Um, or, or will, will likely play some sort of role in this, but there's probably other comprehensive strategies that we'll need to implement as well. Um, and I look forward to working uh towards those.
Um, thanks, Clint. Uh, real quick, uh, I, this past week I was um at a, a a conference session for the tourism industry and they had a session on short-term rentals. Um, very different perspective, of course, uh, you know, as how uh theirs was mostly dealing with how it impacts hot tax and um, and those things. But we did have a conversation about um the uh consequences that it was having in residential areas. They mentioned certain cities that I wonder if we've given any um, uh glance at and, and as opposed to how they're doing it. Um, San Antonio has a density maximum um cap that they use on whether or not they permit short-term rentals. Nashville has a limited number of SDR ones within their city. Um, Savannah um is, was supposed to be like the um, uh the go-to city to look at. Now that's, again, that's from the tourism side, not necessarily municipality side. Um, Columbus, Georgia has like a, a, a three strikes and you're out rule with their um uh, short-term rental permit holders. So if you've had, you know, how we always ask about, have there been any complaints on the, the short-term rental application? Um, and those, that, that, they, they fall very high on that rule. So um, but Breckenridge also was like the grandfather of short-term rental locations. The mountain and the beach areas. So I want to um make sure that as we're going through this now, uh, again, as a person who uh patronizes short-term rentals, I get the good side of them. But I also know what they do to our troubled neighborhoods and our neighborhoods that are, that are suffering already within the housing inventory laws. So I applaud our efforts to try to make and do right by Wacoans. Okay? Because at the end of the day, that's what we're here for. We welcome our visitors and all of that. But um at the end of the day, making and, and growing stronger, more financially secure Wacoans is, is a, a big, a big leading part of what we do. So um, I appreciate this effort to try to figure out a way to get there. Um, I agree with Councilmember Borderu that, you know, as we both served on Plan Commission, uh, again with Councilmember, uh, Mayor Proton Sabito. again with Councilmember, Mayor Protem Sabido, you know, we understand that this process is, is grueling at times and there needs to be a better way to get it done. But doing that intentionally and, and with the intent to level the playing field, if you will, for people trying to grow and move, I mean, because it, when you showed that graph, I mean, it, you know, it, it really hit me at how hard it is to find a house in 76704. And so, I mean, that spoke volumes to me. I mean, and no big surprise because I got people calling me all the time. So, it was like, I would love to move, you know, people my age, my peers, moving back to the city to care for their aging parents. And they can't find anywhere to live in the city, but they, that they want to live in. So, you know, I am definitely in support of this effort in this ordinance and how we move forward to do right by us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Clint, as my fellow council members, thank you for this presentation. I have to say that I'm very happy to see these proposed changes come before council. You know, I'm, I'm not a firm believer that the housing crisis that we have in Waco, that we have in Waco is all due to SDRs. I'm not, I, I don't think that way. I think there's, there's many things that contribute to it, but I think as we begin to address these things that, you know, how to, as we begin to solve these problems, I think it definitely helps. And so, I do appreciate the, especially the proposed changes of SDR twos and SDR threes, not being in residential homes anymore, or residential areas anymore. And so, I have to say, you know, for that to be 80% of the SDRs that we see on council, I think it's going to definitely accomplish in a quicker way some goals that we have for SDRs and how they, how it looks like in our city and, and how they comes to pass. I do just have a few questions, just for clarification from my, from my, so I know that the SDRs that are in operation right now, what can, their grandfathered in, they're, they'll continue to operate. But once that license expires, the applicant will have the opportunity to renew the license, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, perfect, good. I just want to make sure that, you know, because they have been in operation, that we are not pulling the rug from underneath them, just for lack of better words, that they'll continue the opportunity to operate. However, if that house is changed in ownership, then that SDR will no longer be allowed to operate in SDR two, SDR three in a neighborhood, correct?
So, that, that's a good question because we, we've allowed SDRs as long as the, the license is kept up to date. You know, that it could, it can be transferred over to the new owner that, for the ones that are permitted by right, the, the ones that require the special permits, that, that is a good point. So, it's because the special permits don't transfer, so they actually have to come back through the process. So, that, you're right. So, if the ownership changes on those special permits, you know, and then the ordinance has changed where we no longer allow those, and once that, you know, that owner no longer operates a licensed SDR, then that property would no longer be available.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding correctly as you were making the presentation. And then one other point of clarification for me, I know that you mentioned that 69% of the SDRs that come before council are SDRs two and 11% are SDR three. Do you have a hardcore number of what that is, like the number rather than the percentage?
I had, I had.
And if not, if not, it's okay. I was just wondering.
I, I can get that for you. It was in our presentation for March. I, I had that, I can get that information too.
No worries. Other than that, you know, thank you so much for, for once again, taking the time out to, to bring this before council. You know, I always say SDRs are really our, our council's buttons to push, you know? And it's clearly you can see it. And so, I, I think this is a great start of how we begin to address these issues. So, thank you so much for bringing before this and have my support.
Thank you.
Oh, this is Holmes. I'll chime in here also. The, I'm trying, the shorthand on type three are the apartment types. I'm just shorthanding this whole thing. Type threes are the apartment types, type twos are the non-owner occupied, type, type ones are the owner occupied. That kind of.
That's correct.
Cut into the chase on it. So, type twos and threes, no longer allowed in single-family zoned, or not allowed, but we're just kind of, we're taking a breather on it for, for a bit. Type ones, you can still apply with a special permit in a, in a single family. So, if you are owner occupied and you want to operate a short-term rental, you can still apply for the permit, but that has to come through council. But that, and then on top of that, it's only 16% of the total that we've seen.
Correct.
Is that right Clint?
Correct. And the, and the reason behind that is it does, that does offer a potential for somebody to, you know, have some extra revenue coming in that could make a house affordable to somebody. You know, so that, that's why we felt like the SDR ones were important to leave in there.
Absolutely Clint, because yeah, we've seen them kind of not work in places and we've seen them work beautifully in places and, you know, with, with neighborhood support and all that stuff. The other context as we think about this also to me are the hotel rooms coming online and the hotels that we've kind of incentivized, you know, this convention center stuff on Mary Avenue that, that hopefully will all get launched here and everything we're seeing there on Elman Bridge, MLK. I mean, it's just, it's beautiful to look at that all come up. That's going to, will ease some of the tourism need, room needs too. So, I'm just thinking in the holistic totality of it, I think we've, we'll still serve our tourism industry well. But yeah, thanks for taking a look at this. It gets, it's a moving target. So, I appreciate staff reviewing the data.
All right Clint, I'll, I'll wrap us up. I really appreciate the nuance and complexity and thought you put into this. I think what you've proposed is hitting so much of what we've articulated over the six months. I've been on council and I know over the years of the rest of our council members. So, thank you for your strategic vision here. Curious about the caps or the density that was mentioned, when do you anticipate you might bring something like that before us to consider?
Yeah, we're, we're going to have to drill down more into the data and honestly, you know, some of that is just having access to the data to determine, you know, because a lot of the cities use those caps to, you know, for areas of concentration where it's really impacting, Austin has it, they do theirs by zip code. And they can vary. I mean, because, I mean, you, you might need, you know, if you're having a problem in one part of the town, you might need to have a cap that's different than another part. So, it's really going to be taking a deeper dive into that data and looking at it, you know, before we determine that. But that, that's going to be ongoing discussion that we have.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that was just, seeing the data was really compelling, seeing 04, 06, 07, and just the absolute lack of available housing. I hope that this is a conversation that will transition into our retreat next week as we think about what our priorities are going to be in the budget and really hope that we can push some resources to looking at how we address housing because it is clearly, we are in the thick of a housing crisis that I think we could suffer some pretty serious ramifications if we don't really aggressively address in both policy like we're doing now and in funding. So, I appreciate your leadership Clint.
Thank you.
Thanks Clint. All right Bradley, what's, what do we have next?
We've got one more work session and it's, I'm going to invite Jonathan Cook, our Parks and Recreation Director into the room and he'll provide us a brief overview of a, what I'd call a pretty neat project over at Greenwood Cemetery to map more than 2,500 headstones at a, our historic cemetery. So, Jonathan, you want to take us away?
Well Bradley, and thank you, mayor and council. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak with you here this afternoon and I'm going to share my screen real quick. And we are here to talk about Greenwood Cemetery and this is a project that met with y'all not too long ago, back in October, as we were really wrapping up some construction elements of our improvement project that we had at Greenwood. And I, I joke around with my parks guys, we like to finish a project obviously and get it open, but in our minds, a project's never done. Obviously, the grass is being mowed, the trash tended to, and in this situation, customer service is really important. And as we found out at Greenwood and we were in the press a little bit and people realized that the improvements were made, we've really seen a spark of interest as from our community, relatives and family as far as reaching out and really wanting to learn about the history and try to locate some family members. So, it's definitely been an interesting process and one that we're able to use some technology as we move forward. So, today we're going to be looking at a couple of things and we're going to give a brief background of the cemetery, the current management status, look at the review of our recent improvement project we had out there. And finally, we're going to be looking at that mapping and customer service. As we've discussed before, but we have some new council members and for our public, Greenwood Cemetery is Waco's second oldest cemetery that we have within the city limits, located off of South Highway 77. And this cemetery, it's a sprawling area and it was first purchased by the city as far as land for a cemetery in 1875. But it wasn't just the city who was involved in establishing this resting place. It was also the county, private individuals and different groups adjoining neighborhood properties. So, it's really a patchwork of the community coming together to create a resting place for many of the residents here in Waco. The cemetery now includes 18 acres and as Bradley mentioned, more than 2,500 headstones. Now, I, I say headstones and memorials there and use that approximate because this one thing we want to discuss is we are quite unsure and really discovering exactly the amount of burials. But if you can imagine, 2,500 is quite a lot and it's a good size of property. Greenwood also includes many of our notable African-American leaders and citizens and is the resting place for many of our residents that passed away during the Spanish flu pandemic. So, quite a bit of history is held in here. And I tell you, and I've mentioned this in a previous presentation, you want to go to a history class. It's a very interesting to not only go out there and see the different headstones, but then you go back and look up that information. And that's where that interest comes in and really able to discover who were some of these African-American leaders in our community. And I, I tell you, the city, we're a late player to this game in a lot of respects. As we've come in, really in the past decade as far as a preservation project, but we've had many community groups and associations that were instrumental in preserving this cemetery over the past 150 years. As I mentioned, near the past decade is when we've really become involved. 2007, the council approved to close the majority of the cemetery to further burials. When I, when I say closed to, to the majority of the cemetery, what I want to say is we still do work with people who have proof and want, have plots within Greenwood, but we are not actively outselling spots within the cemetery. The city also came in in 2014 and working with the neighborhood groups or cemetery associations to assume that overall maintenance plan. And as you know, we've embarked on the improvement project that we just wrapped up this past year. And I tell you, even since that improvement project has taken place, that maintenance has gone a step above to making sure that we're working in the maintaining of the area, making sure that we don't have illegal dumping. We've seen a lot of the improvements have already helped in that respect. But I tell you, out there this week, obviously like everybody's yard, the grass is growing, but it's something that's constantly on our schedule and radar to make sure that we're protecting this resting place. And finally, I want to mention in 2020, we also through council, the approval of declaration of intent. And what this did was consolidate the cemetery into one property. I mentioned it was a patchwork to where there was different ownerships and different plots of property all within the cemetery. So, this declaration intent helped it all get under one roof and it's really helping in regards to the management. It is our Parks and Recreation Department leading up this effort, but I tell you, it is a collaborative effort. Our specialty can sometimes be ballfields and playgrounds. And so, there's been some challenging and some learning that our staff has done, but interesting nonetheless. And we've had to use the resources of our city secretary's office, different internal city departments like the library, a lot of great staff as far as over there, also our GIS and IT department, which I'll talk about. But then also Mr. Clint Lynch and the Oakwood and Rosemount Cemetery Associations. Very important in helping this guide through, as y'all know, we have an agreement with Rosemount as far as the management of that property. And finally, as a lot of our historic areas, but especially in this one, a lot of work with the Texas Historical Commission. Now, the, the recent improvements, there was a $435,000 project where we came in to perimeter fencing, ornate entryways and also signage. And this project was assisted by multiple land contributions. I mentioned the cemetery associations, but also TexDOT, McLennan County, even the Methodist Children's Home. And one of the more interesting projects besides what you see on, on the perimeter and just entering in the cemetery is the fact that we were able to use surveying technology that gave us a framework to digitally map where the grave markers are. And so, as I mentioned, there was a lot of property owners and management groups over the years. And so, there is just, to be honest, a lack of a lot of burial records that have really impacted those trying to discover where a burial site for a family or loved one might be. And that's a bad call. And we've gotten a lot of those to where, hey, I'm looking for, you know, my great-grandfather. I'm looking for an uncle and, and just trying, but you know, we've really improved that over the past couple of months as we've been able to establish. First and foremost, there was no map that exists as far as, well, I, I, let me say, there, there are maps that different groups have worked on, but getting those all combined into one cohesive map. And, and just like everybody else, when I say a map, gone are the days to where we get the paper map out of the glove box and, and look at it. Where do we all want to go for a map? Well, if you're looking for cemeteries, there's a website called Findaggrave.com. Now, there is a tremendous amount of work that's been done by volunteers to have the different headstones listed, but there's still no comprehensive map. And that's really been square one is what we've wanted to do is provide that map in terms of customer service so people can get an idea of you're going to be in this section, you know, this row. And making those strides, this digital survey has really established those first steps for us to better get this public information out. Now, along with that, there's been a lot of work from former city secretaries, different volunteer groups. As I mentioned, our library, Mr. Bill Buckner is just tremendous out there to where we had written content as well and written records. So, you know, I, I relate it to Councilman Holmes might can relate to this, but I was like, this past weekend, me and, me and my wife, we're digitizing all of our vinyl record names, you know, and I just had 500 of them. But what do you have to do? You have to go and search and you write down and put in the Excel spreadsheet. And this is exactly what we're having to do out here at the cemetery. It's a very time-consuming process. And if you look at the picture on the right, I use this headstone as an example because you can't read it. You know, it's got the algae, it's got the fade on it. And finding some of those things like dates, some of the headstones are very hard to read. And so, a lot of it is going out. It's a delicate process. It's just taking a lot of time for us to go row by row to map out, to see and make sure that the written records are matching up with where the digital mapping data is lining up. So, as we finish the construction out there, that's really where we started taking an earnest look at this. And we're currently at a 25% mapping status. And this is a project that we're working on with a target of completion by the end of the year. And as we go through, we'll get this map established in a record. And the ultimate goal, this database is going to be available through our genealogy center and webpage and also our Parks and Recreation webpage. But even more than have it posted, I, I think this information to where we can look up a name and being able to determine, yes, we check it, we, we can find a location, we can direct someone who's coming into town, maybe a visitor, maybe used to live here. We can direct them to the right place to provide them with the map of where to go is the ultimate goal. And so, for right now, as we're really working on it, Mr. Buckner I mentioned has been a great help. We'll refer people over to him. Also, our park inspector, Mr. Max Shaw, who oversaw the project and Tom Balk out here. The amount of time that was spent out here and learning the cemetery and having staff members on site has really become a valuable resource as we've learned more and more about it. And it, it's really just the city and that customer server wanting to be able to provide an answer. And that's the main point because we know that this is not only a historical spot, but a very, a spot that holds a lot of memories. We're proud to be in the midst of this preservation project. So, as we move forward and utilizing technology with different GIS maps. So um, as we move forward and utilizing technology with different GIS maps, uh, we want this to where you can go eventually and you'll be able to click on a headstone area or area and pull up that information. Uh, that technology is there. Um, and that's just something, one of the many ways that the city's working on our transparency and information technology areas to make sure that we're delivering this information to the public. So um, as I mentioned, uh, we're continuing on with this with hopes that by the end of the year, we'll be entering uh, a completion of that mapping process to where we can get these maps uploaded. So with that, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Hey Jonathan, um, just thank you again for the presentation. We're, Greenwood is a jewel and the work that you all have done have made it just a even more of a shining bright crown jewel of District One. We appreciate you. I'm sure the families um really appreciate you. You made mention of, of, of this being a process and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we continue to acknowledge the people who belabored that um uh stick or carrot, whichever you, you know, you prefer to identify with, but former council member Noah Jackson, um, former city secretary Trish Irvin, uh, former city attorney Art Pertile and um all of the people who were in the city, city attorney's office and, you know, that have worked, that worked to, to see that through and see that partnership stand up. Um, I, I, I am glad to hear that you all are working and partnering with the library. Uh, we have an excellent um genealog- what, genealogy department? And it's, it's imperative that, that, that that information is housed somewhere. Did I, I heard you say that it will have a website that, that can be cross-referenced as people, you know, because I mean, as as ancestry and my twenty-three get all uh, continue to gain popularity, people want to go back and see their family lineage for those of us who can. And um, and I just want to make sure that there is a way that people can, can gather that data and I'm glad to hear that, again, you're working with um, the Trails for Parents Texas Historical C- Commission. And you know, and keeping all of these things and all of the, the uh historical context interrelated. Um, because we're, you know, we're all kind of working towards the same goal. So um, if you just could clarify about the website and then um again, please accept my uh congratulations and and appreciation for the work that you continue to do to honor our past Waco.
Well, uh, uh, thank you, council member, and you, you're exactly right. I, I do want to say, uh, w- with me coming in and being a part of the department, there was a lot of work a- and many people before I that, that took up to make this right. A- and try to make it a preservation for our city and really honor that history. Um, you are right, uh, on the website, we, we currently have an informational webpage on our Parks and Recreation website. Um, but we will do plan to house the main database through the library system. Um, and uh, I tell you, uh, oh my gosh, what we will do i- is, when I mentioned Findaggrave, when you Google graves, you know, that, that does come up, it's sort of the big dog on the market. So it will be linked over as far as a mapping to where we can provide more of that detailed information. Um, uh, but I, I now will add, and uh, I, I no doubt, I think you, a lot of the calls is from a uh, more, some of our seniors and elderly populations sometimes. So I've also uh made it important, I've talked to Tom in our office. I think it's very important for us to have a physical map as well. Um, and that brochure style to where somebody who's coming in and going out, that might not have the ability on their phone. So it'll be both that printed and online database i- is what we're going for. Um, you know, and like I said, i- it is just sort of combing through everything and getting out there and sort of meticulous work and relying on our volunteers and other departments and our staff. Um, and so obviously, I want it to be done right now, but it is something that we're pushing and moving forward and making sure it's on the radar.
Thank you.
Jonathan, I want to second all of uh Councilmember Bearfield's comments about your good work with this project. And I don't just say this because I'm a dropout of an American history PhD program, but this is really cool work. And uh, and it's, it's cool to see you kind of bringing history back to life and honoring this community in this way. Uh, and I did want to ask, actually, from kind of an academic perspective, h- has there been any scholarly interest in this or any partnerships with local institutions? Because this seems like a dissertation waiting to be, waiting to be done.
Well, I I miss, uh, I mentioned Mr. Lynch, uh, who works with our Rosemount and Oakwood Cemeteries here. And he does work wi- with Baylor University as far as students and Rosemount has gone through a very similar process of basically converting the index cards to a digital database. Um, a- and you go there, I remember the first time I went and met with him and it was literally the old school rolodex of, of files and they're going card by card. And we've inherited that in the city secretaries, I mean. So i- it's just that conversion and is a lot. Um, a- and also mentioned, you know, the um, you know, Baylor University, uh, uh, Bob Darden and what they've done as far as uh the historical perspective with gospel music. We've also had some conversation a- as far as not only, uh, you know, do you have Jules Bledsoe out there, but, but other people who have played in impact. Um, a- and obviously, Jules is one that comes to mind, but you're exactly right. You go, there is a long list um, of, of people that you can go out there that you really didn't know that you're like, uh, you know, you take a step back, but even so, uh, I, I, uh, we talk about the history, it is still a very relevant cemetery uh to people today. And there are still plots that are out there a- and, you know, fathers and brothers a- and so uh it's sort of bridging the old and new of an area. And and I think a lot of it just goes to y'all's support to make this project happen a- and making sure it's in a condition uh, that we can say, okay, historically, we're proud of this and wanting to preserve it. So um, I appreciate the comments in regards to the historical side of it. So hopefully, I haven't tripped too much, uh, since uh you've got that background. That's good to know now.
Well, there was a reason I dropped out, but thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Um, Josh, uh, uh, excuse me, Jonathan and uh rest of staff, thank you for your diligence and, and Councilmember Bearfield's comments, staff that have come before. Um, I think, you know, the last two presentations from staff, this one and the short terminal ones, just shows that we have a staff that is so dedicated to doing hard, thoughtful, um, and excellent work. And uh, this, I, you know, I just take it for granted. I know that there's gonna be just kind of excellence baked into um, every presentation we see to, so to our city manager's office, um, and our city attorney's office and every other department. Um, thank you for the excellence that we have come to expect in council presentations like this, um, from Mr. Cook um, and Mr. Peters. Um, so with that, we'll turn it back over to you, Bradley.
All right, Mayor, that, that concludes our work sessions for today and I think we've just got some space for maybe a call for future agenda items.
Great. Is there any uh requests for future agenda items?
Hey Mayor, I do, I do have one. Um, with, with our economy opening up and, and things are beginning to open up again. You know, I would like for us to revisit um the topic. I know some things have been done in the past, but really, like, what are the next steps in involving more of our local vendors? Um, and how do we support them in bidding for city jobs? Um, how do we engage more MWBEs in city bids as well? You know, I, I think it's very important that, you know, we just spent an entire year saying, you know, support our local business, support our local business, support our local business. Um, and it's, it's, I think it would, you know, I know the city has done a great job in beginning that process and engaging some of our local vendors, but you know, where are we with creating that database? Where are we with? You know, there were talks about even holding some fairs of how we can involve more of our local vendors in the city bid. And so just want to follow up report on that, on, on how things are going and how we plan to uh move forward as well.
Thank you, Hector. I agree. Any other future agenda items? All right, we will now recess the work session or reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at three fifty-nine PM.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, Attorney Briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section five five one point zero seven one. Daniel Jacob Ellis versus City of Waco, Texas, and the Zurian American Insurance Company, cause number CB four eight nine dash one nine zero C. Pending in the sixty-sixth, sixty-sixth Judicial District Court, Hill Country, Texas. Hill County, Texas. Two, Real Property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section five five one point zero seven two. Three, Economic Development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section five five one point zero eight seven. And four, Personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section five five one point zero seven four. Municipal Court Judge Christopher Taylor. We are now in executive session at four PM.